I would like to call to order a regular meeting of Norman Public Schools, Norman Public Schools. Could I pass the clip to call the roll, see if we're here?
Dan Snell?
Yes.
Sidney Macher?
Here.
Chad Fy?
Here.
Dirk O'Hara?
Here.
Thank you. Could you join me in my pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, I just want to make a comment that slides room is glitching on us, so we are recording it and will post right after, you know, as soon as the meeting is open on our same platform. But if it happens to get going, they'll take it up as soon as possible. But it's not an internal issue. I think it's an external issue that's causing us this issue. So just wanted to make that point. We will get posted as soon as either right after the meeting or as soon as we can available.
Okay, thank you. And there's special agenda to work on. Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. President, members of the board, Dr. Mike Ram, it is my pleasure to introduce an, it probably needs no introduction, if he's been around Norman Public Schools very long. Norman Public Schools has a tradition of really outstanding science teachers. This man is, he is a top of the list, okay? He takes physics, math, teaches it to kids, and they like it, okay? He does that by building relationships with kids. He does it by hitting their areas of interest. I've seen him provide physics and art. They launch rockets. His ball team is second to none. It's internationally known. The man I'm talking about is David Askey, our physics teacher at Norman High. He is this year's Physics Teacher of the Year for the Arkansas, Oklahoma, Kansas region of the American Association of Physics Teachers. So David Askey.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, congratulations. Everything Jeff just said, well, other than trying to find my way around your room, question, my favorite thing about your classroom is, I think it's the note on your refrigerator, you know, clean up after yourself, I'm not your mom.
Absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely. Congratulations. Okay, next up, Stephanie Woods.
Mr. President, members of the board, and as I mentioned earlier, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recognize two tremendous educators and their special accomplishments. The Oklahoma Council for Indian Education has the mission to advocate within the state of Oklahoma for Native American students. Their guiding principles are to promote Indian education at all levels of learning, expand cultural awareness, and collaborate with other organizations to the benefit of Oklahoma Indian students. The Oklahoma Council for Indian Education presents annual awards where they recognize the Teacher of the Year, Educator of the Year, and Student of the Year. The Teacher of the Year award is presented to an educator who has shown tremendous dedication and years of advocacy supporting Native American students. Excellent educators encourage students to ask questions and to engage in the world and people around them. In other words, they empower students to make real-world connections and foster a love for learning. This description could not paint a more accurate picture of Norman High and Norman North educator Matt Jackson, whom I am honored to recognize as being the recipient of the 2021 Oklahoma Council for Indian Education's Teacher of the Year.
David, you guys can come up closer.
We have good cameras.
The Lucian Harjo Leadership Award is the highest recognition for individual achievement. This award acknowledges and celebrates exemplary leadership that has a significant and positive impact on advancing Indian education in the state of Oklahoma. No one embodies the Oklahoma Council for Indian Education's mission more than Lucian Harjo. She is a true advocate for Indian students and leads this work with such strong passion and dedication. Lucian has served tirelessly on the OCIE Board for over ten years and has not missed a single meeting. It is not every day that someone gets such an inspiring award named in their honor. It's my privilege to congratulate and recognize Norman Public Schools' Indian Education Coordinator, Lucian Harjo, on being the inaugural recipient of Oklahoma Council for Indian Education's 2021 Lucian Harjo Leadership Award.
Congratulations, Lucian. If you want to say anything. You sure? Congratulations to all of you. Next up on the agenda is, if you do not know, this month is Board Appreciation Month, and salute and gratitude to-
Why have they chosen this month of all months?
You know, just like most things, I don't have much control over that. So you just messed me up. So I just, I'm not going to read everything that's printed on the agenda to you. This month is Board of Educat-, Board Member Edi-, let me start over. Board Member Recognition Month, and, you know, just truly appreciative, I've said this over and over, of the work and tireless effort that you put into leading this district, the countless hours that you spend, whether it's going to sites or working with myself and our leadership team, is much appreciated. So much of it goes unnoticed. You know, the many hours every single week that you guys invest into Norman Public Schools does not go unnoticed, and because of your support and because of your leadership, Norman Public Schools is what Norman Public Schools is. So with that, just want to thank you in recognition of School Board Recognition Month. Great job, and we truly appreciate you. There are some plaques in front of you. You get these every year. And when we go into executive session, there's a bunch of stuff provided by a bunch of the children and sites around the district, so you'll get to enjoy that. But I would like to take this opportunity, we don't get to spend much time all together, so if we could all be out front and take a group picture, I'd appreciate it. So congratulations and thank you.
All right, I think our next agenda item is public communications, and we have one. Katie Brunk, if you would take one slowly.
We welcome public communications. However, it is necessary to limit public comments to three minutes per person. We begin at one minute a morning or at the end of the period, and board members cannot respond to questions or comments during public communication, but we are interested in hearing them.
Okay, I'll try to keep it under three minutes. I want to talk to you all about math. This is going forward. Last week, I received a copy of a link to a file in the middle school, high school, Google Share Drive for math teachers. This file contained a link to a lesson plan unit for intermediate algebra, and this lesson plan was called Social Injustice Mathematics. So just really quickly, I'm going to go over their timeline for what the units they're using and this group are called. We've got one on marginal tax rates, a lesson created by Dr. Kate Raymond, N O U, a budgeting project, I wish they would have used that one, I was going to say, and the wage gap, in parentheses, social injustice mathematics, wealth inequality, social injustice mathematics, school-to-person pipeline, statistics and policing, social injustice mathematics, zip codes and SAT ACT scores, social injustice mathematics, literacy, social injustice mathematics, gender and sexual identity, social injustice mathematics. Not sure how some of that is math. And I'm going to give you a quick example on one of the lessons, a worksheet called Stopped by Police. Part one, who is more likely to be searched and pulled over by police? Researchers from Stanford University conducted a study on the Oakland Police Department looking for racial bias in how police interacted with people. The researchers looked at videos from body cameras the police were wearing as well as the data from police records. The following data came from 981 times police stop records in Oakland in April 2014. Only interactions with black and white drivers were analyzed in this study. And it asks you complete a table with a set of data based on only black and white people. And then it asks, make two observations. What did you notice about who is and who is likely to be searched when they are pulled over while writing? We don't need to do this with race. We can do this with apples and oranges. This is not teaching math. This is teaching racism. Giving children statistics like this with zero context, presenting them as a whole set of data is irresponsible. Disguising it as algebra is dishonest. If this is the kind of lesson material being shared between math teachers, what's going on in the other subjects? MPS cannot deny that this seems to be our team, is being taught in our schools, because any reasonable person would have to assume if it's being distributed, it's being used. Thank you for sharing.
And thank you. And now, we look at routine business, which we've been setting over the weekend, as a promotion.
Yes, sir. I make a motion that we accept items I Q J as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion and questions. Give me the number, click the clip, call the roll.
Dan Snell?
Yes.
Sidney Macher?
Yes.
Chad Fy?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Our additional agenda items are crowned by our state aid allocation.
Good evening. So this item I am presenting tonight for information, it is the state aid analysis. We received our midterm adjustment from the State Department last week, and I am here to share that information with you. I will remind you that every July, districts across the state receive their initial state aid allocation based on information that's available to the State Department at that time. What they do with the total appropriations for state aid is they withhold a minimum of one and a half percent in July, preparing for potential growth to reallocate to districts in January. This past July, our State Department withheld two percent instead of the minimum of one and a half percent, again, in preparation for that growth that they usually see during the middle of the year. So with that money that's held back, then with all the information that state, excuse me, that school districts are turning in on their current year student enrollment, and what the assessed valuation is for districts across the state, all of this information is put into the funding formulas, the state aid funding formula, and presents districts with a midterm state aid allocation. And so we're going to go through those numbers for our district now. So there's three major components to the state aid formula. There's the factors, which is how much is paid per weighted average daily membership in effect per student, what that weighted ADM is, and then finally what the chargeables are, or the takeaway that a district has from their state aid formula. So I'm going to start first with the factors. You will see that I've listed here that in July, the state aid factor totaled $3,517.12. That amount has gone up this January. The per pupil state aid factor has gone up to $3,620.61. That's an increase over the July amount of $103.49. So we were pleased that we saw a nice, large increase in this per student factor in the formula. Whoops, I went back. I need to go forward. The next slide, and the next component of the state aid formula is the weighted average daily membership. What I've done on this slide this evening is I've listed the last two full years that our district has experienced. The first year, two years ago, was FY 1920. And the middle column is last year. These are our full year numbers for our students last year, 2021. And the third column are the numbers for the first nine weeks of this school year. And what I want to point out to you is that the way the state aid formula works in January, they pay us on the higher of these three columns that I'm showing you here. I bolded the first column, 1920, because it is the higher of these three sets of numbers that I've shared with you. We have been paid on our weighted ADM for 1920, for school year 1920, of $26,793.95. We were paid on that last year, and we're being paid on it this year, because it's the high of these three columns. If you'll look at the middle column, 2021, I'll remind you, I don't have to, but I will remind you that last year is when families were starting to return to us. And you can see that Norman, like many school districts across the state, saw drops in enrollment, and of course, when you've got less students, then those other types of characteristics typically also decrease. So for example, in full year 1920, our raw average daily membership, basically the student bodies walking through the door, was $16,194. Last year, the full year raw ADM dropped all the way down to $14,463. This year, first nine weeks' numbers, we were, we've turned in $15,369. So you can see that we gained back students from where we were last year. And I will tell you that even, that this is a first nine weeks' number, as we looked at our enrollment counts through December, our current student enrollment is actually at $15,616. So that shows you that we're continuing to retain kiddos, families, and students, and actually get some of them to come back to us as well. What's really important about this is that concept of you're paid on the higher of the preceding year for the current year. So it's going to be really important for us and all of our due diligence to continue to keep our enrollment as high as possible, grow it as much as we can this year, because we're going to lose that 1920 year in our funding. We won't have that year to go back to whenever we look at our funding for next year. So I thought it would be interesting to kind of see what those weights look like and how we look on those totals as we go across. So again, our weighted ADM in our formula for January, same number that was used in July, okay? The third component of the state aid formula is the chargeables. These are categories of revenue that our district receives, if you will, locally, that are driven by different county revenues and state revenues that come to our district: advarum, county four mil, school land earnings, gross production, motor vehicle, and REA. These amounts are added together, these categories of revenue, for these totals of what are called chargeables against our state aid formula. In July, our chargeables totaled over $48 million. In January, we have those same numbers, except the big one you see that's changed is advarum. The way the state formula works on chargeables is all these other categories are based on collections from last year, so that'd be FY 21 revenue. But advarum is based off of current year assessed valuation and expectations for property, advarum money to be received. So really, in July to January, the biggest reason for our change in chargeables was that advarum. You can see that it increased almost 1.4 million. There was a slight adjustment to county four mil and a late payment made for school land earnings that went out to all the districts is the reason why you see some adjustment on those other two categories. But all that combined, you can see that our chargeables, how much is going to be taken away from our state aid funding, totals 1 million. That increase is 1,572 over where it was in July. So now I'm going to put all those pieces together and explain what happened with our January state aid notice, and why did we see an increase from July to January? So as we see there, and as I mentioned, you can see the factors went up, $103.49. We talked about that the weighted ADM was flat, because we're using last year's numbers, so that stays consistent, no change there. So that would be an increase to our state aid formula received into the district of 2.7 million. Transportation aid was nearly flat, small change there. So really, our total state aid increase before chargeables would have been 2.7 million. The last slide, we talked about that all those chargeables increased by another one and a half million. So that's a takeaway, a reduction from our funding. So our state aid increased 1,196,006 from July's amount of 46.6 million to January's amount of 47.8 million. Now I want to point out something to everyone. The State Department is doing three midterm allocations to states this year. We received our first one on Friday, which was the amount that I'm showing you here. They ran another adjustment through the formula this weekend, and the main thing that happened from that, they assessed some penalties in this second allocation, but one of the big kind of takeaways is they added more money into the Lindsey and Nicole Henry Scholarship monies. And that adding more to that Lindsey and Nicole Henry Scholarship took away from the formula for the rest of us. That amounted to about a $10,000 difference from what you see here. I prepared all this Friday based on Friday's number. But here's kind of the good news for us. There's still a third adjustment that's going to be made by the end of January. You may recall that the State Board met, the State Board of Education met December 16th, and determined that the epic administrative cost penalty was going to be assessed, and that adjustment would be applied towards the state aid funding formula. They have not yet run that penalty or the admin cost through our formula yet. They're checking numbers, checking the program, doing their thing, and then posting an additional adjustment at the end of this month. It will be nothing but an increase to this number that I'm showing you tonight, because it is a takeaway on the, when the penalties are assessed, they take that from the district that it's been assessed, and they reallocate those funds that are now available to the districts and running that back through the formula. So I'm very anxious to find out how much more of an increase to our state aid adjustment is going to occur once that, once the finance office of the State Department has finalized that. So let me go ahead and do one more slide, and then I'll take some questions if you've got some. So how does this impact our projected general fund balance for the end of this year? You can see that we ended last year, we talked about this when I did the audit presentation last month, we ended last year's fund balance at 10.1 million, which was an 8.24% fund balance. Our revenues are now adjusted with this additional almost 1.2 million state aid. So now you're seeing that revenues and expenditures are nearly balanced, where revenue is actually higher than expenditures right now, showing an increase to our fund balance of almost $542,000. You're going to see that with the numbers presented tonight, that brings us to a projected fund balance end of this year of 10.6 million and 8.09% fund balance. When Nick met with you all last week on your one to ones, you'll recall that that fund balance was a 7.24%. So obviously, with the increase in state aid, that's making for a healthier projection for our fund balance. So that is my presentation. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
I'll make one comment. And, you know, every year, we'd love to get a positive midterm adjustment, but I also want you to know that we're very cognizant, obviously, of our planning moving forward to continue to increase our fund balance, as one point. But also, I want to remind you that our insurance rates went up, our deductibles went up, and the reason, one of the reasons why we need to have a strong fund balance is if we have another hailstorm, another ice storm, another something that causes damage that we have to pay, we have to have deductible dollars in place. And this is just another opportunity where we're able to build our fund balance and thus assure that we deal with some deductibles. So I want you to know that we're very cognizant of that as we plan forward, not only for this year, but multiple years into the future.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments?
So, yeah, Brenda, can you remind us what that epic penalty was, dollar? Do you remember what that was?
I believe it was a $9 million dollar amount.
So it was $11 million?
I believe it was, I know it was $11 million last year when they were having a penalty, and it-
You're right. You're right.
So it's, I think that's also part of why the State Department has paused. I think they're trying to make sure, looking at their numbers, something I read today said that the penalty was for through 2019, and I think the State Department and the state auditor are still looking at 2020. So there's, there's a little bit more still analysis and review and assessment that's going on with that penalty. So I, but I do think it was a $9 million.
And I appreciate the State Department taking their time and not rushing to judgment, because if you remember, last year, they got their penalty, and it got put back into the formula, and then they actually gained money back, and, you know, making sure they do it right. Truly appreciate them taking their time. But also, what you're seeing here is a minimum of what we're going to receive. We only know it's going to go up, but, yeah.
And do we know any basis of the formula, like what this might mean to us?
I'm sorry, ask me again.
So what is, what is the formula for getting that money? Do you know what that really means to Norman Public Schools?
No, because it's all driven by, I mean, everybody's valuation and student and all that. I can tell you that the more enrollment you have, and if something like this happens, and the formula's all kind of done like it is right now, you're, what really drives how much you get is the size of your per student, because what will happen is that $103 increase we saw in the factors, they'll raise the factors again. And so the factors are times student enrollment, or times weighted ADM. So I can tell you, in the whole scheme of things, Norman is one of the larger weighted ADM schools, will get the majority of it because it follows the students. It's, it's a per-student assessment or allocation. But I don't know yet what that would look like for us. Maybe if this helps, I'd give you a frame of reference. But again, it was last year, and all the variables are different. But when that penalty was assessed last year, we got, it was almost a $4 million. So I'm anxiously waiting to see what it looks like for us this year.
With, can I ask a question? No, thank you. We increased our revenue a little over $500,000, and then our projected fund balance went down by 15 basis points as a percentage. So I understand our expenditures are greater this fiscal year than where last fiscal year, so that's why we've got more money to get, our percentage is going down. Was that increase, the majority or all, in our salary increases, or were there any other increases in there?
Mainly, it was salary and benefits. The insurance premium for our district went up over $1 million. That was a large expense. And then, really, it's almost kind of balanced between revenue and expenditures. But another reason why both of these are higher this year is because of the federal stimulus monies, and that we are applying those monies towards expenditures for the district. And we've got a lot more of those type expenditures that are playing into the budget as well. But I think the operational, it's definitely salary and benefits with the district health, excuse me, district property insurance causing another one of the big increases.
Not tonight, but if you can, just update us on how much of that was in your CARES Act, or your government one-time funding for us?
I can tell you that our total funding between the CARES and the ESAR funding for our school district was, oh, can I tell you? I think it was pushing $30 million that expires and all has to be spent by the end of 2024. Last year, we used approximately $3 million of it. This year, I think we've got about $10 million of it in the budget. Honestly, Dirk, it's been- Honestly, Dirk, it's been, it's been a little bit of a, well, we're, we're still analyzing our federal budgets and our needs and making determinations on the application of those funds. But to Nick's point about, and, and you know this as the board, that, you know, it's, it's important for us to have a strong bound, strong fund balance. And one of the big things is the fact that we are not going to have recurring CARES and S R money. Short of the federal government making some additional allocation, we have to be smart with these dollars and make sure that we're preparing for the cliff that's going to happen in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you.
Thank you. So this, this is good news, I think. But you also have revision of, uh, education policy, or education policy two thousand and six?
I do.
It's an action item.
Yes. Last month, I brought to the board for information a change in our purchasing thresholds for when we require quotes and when we require bids. I'll remind you, there was some legislative action in the last session that increased the threshold at the state level. And so we reviewed our purchasing policy and brought that proposed increase to you for information last month. So it's an action item for you tonight.
All right, I will make a motion that we approve the revisions to Board of Education.
Oh, sorry, here we go.
It's hard now, hold it down. So I think that's why we're all clustered, so let me start over. Um, make a motion to approve the revision of the Board of Education Policy two thousand and six as presented.
Second.
Uh, discussion, clear call of all.
Dan Snow?
Yes.
Cindy Nasher?
Yes.
Chad Byes?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Prentice. Can it be Hallie is here with more calendar?
Oh, it's so exciting, more calendar information. Uh, we actually are looking forward to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar, which when we gather as a calendar committee in the fall of every year, we're always, I mean, our primary objective is to work on that calendar that's two academic years away and always review the ones that are in play already.[740.01][740.04蚌 So our calendar committee did meet several times in the fall. And I bring to you tonight for information and this draft of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four calendar. It is affectionately named the C draft because in cabinet C this morning, we did find, uh, thank you to my friend, uh, something that we needed to change before the board meeting this evening. Um, I will tell you that we, um, not only meet all the state requirements, but also all the things that everyone likes about the Norman Public Schools calendar. And we exceed the one thousand eighty hours, the minimal, minimum instruction time. We have five, at least five professional days. We're actually able to build some additional professional days than at the beginning. And at the end of this calendar for our educators, we meet the requirement for teacher workdays at the beginning and end, but also that first day back in January, which they really appreciate as they gear up for second semester. We have managed to preserve the one week away at Thanksgiving break and the two weeks or ten days, at least ten days at winter break. And all work calendars and contract days work pretty much. We will make a slight alteration for our two hundred and forty-day contracts, which are primarily our middle school principals and administrative staff at the district level, won't be a big deal. Um, and will allow this calendar to work if you choose to approve it next month when I bring it back for action. So any questions for me?
Uh, thank you. I, I think that teacher workday in January is very much appreciated, so.
It is, it's very much appreciated.
In a sense, yeah. And I want to thank you, having our meetings with the board and board pushing, myself and Hallie, to find that way to have that week at Thanksgiving and the two weeks, uh, winter break, all of those things. So I'm so happy we're able to do that, but I thank you guys for, for pushing us on that and basically saying, figure it out.
This should be our new norm, and we are happy to, to work for that every year.
All right, thank you. And that's just great information so far. Uh, topics of comment is welcome, of course. Um, and Stephanie, uh, Board of Education Policy four thousand and four.
Yes. So as you recall, uh, last spring, the legislature passed and governors did sign Senate Bill seven eighty-three, eliminating emergency transfers, which required new policy for our open transfers that needed to be in place by January first, and the board approved those changes in December. Since the approval last month, our legal team made minor adjustments to their recommended language for school districts. So therefore, we wanted to make sure that our language matched those suggestions. And you can see in your backup that I provided, as well as in the next couple of slides, exactly what those changes were. Mostly, the changes involved, i- i- they were changes in word choice additionally and the language regarding transfer approval for siblings. There's more specific information as to how sibling transfers are also based on district capacity. I'm asking for action tonight on these proposed changes, language changes, and I am also more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'm going to make a motion to approve the revisions in the Board of Education Enrollment Policy four zero zero four as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, hearing none, could the court call a roll?
Dan Snow?
Yes.
Cindy Nasher?
Yes.
Chad Byes?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, let's see. The, and he is a resolution authorizing general, uh, general obligation combined purpose bonds, uh, organization. This is the first time, I think we are live now, and this is the first time I've seen this. Okay, so firmly either we call for Zach Robinson?
There. Yes. Yeah, Zach. Can you speak up again? We want to, I don't think we're hearing you. Could these guys are, uh, uh. I don't think that you, can you guys hear him out there without hearing him up here?
Just barely.
Pete, tell us who. No, you're, you're fine. It's, it's on our side, so hold on just a second.
Knock on that door and have him come out and check the live boards. Try it now.
Testing.
There you go.
All right, good evening, everyone. Uh, thank you so much for accommodating me and my quest, uh, to be everywhere all the time. As you know, uh, school districts have school board meetings oftentimes at the same time. So, um, I'm trying to be everywhere tonight, so thank you very much. It's great to see all of you. Um, and, and we do have a little bit of, uh, of agenda items for the bonds that I'd like to just walk through quickly, uh, with you. First of all, we're right on schedule with, you know, our bond issuance, uh, uh, plan. Um, this is year, uh, four of our twenty nineteen election authorization plan. So where it's, it's that, the time of year, uh, we use a board have to authorize the sale of our bonds. We do that two series, which I'll, I'll, I'll explain again. That's been our, uh, kind of our MO since they changed the tax code back in January of twenty eighteen. So the first action item is to authorize the sale of the thirty million, one hundred thousand combined purpose bonds. Um, we will accept bids up until ten thirty A M on February seventh, uh, your next scheduled meeting date. I will be at your meeting that night to present those bids to you. Um, the bonds have a five-year final maturity, which is, you know, in line with our historical kind of, uh, you know, uh, how we, how we issue our bonds to get the bottom off the tax rolls as efficiently as we can. So that, you know, helps us to keep the bonds short, um, to hopefully have the lowest interest that we can on the bonds. So, um, this first one is for the thirty million, one hundred thousand, uh, combined purpose tax exempt series. I'd be happy to answer questions if there are any on process or, or this series or this sale. All of these are, are improved bonds and with just our normal, like, you plan the shipments and work, you work, uh, uh, on, on our track and on plan.
And this is all authorized by our voters in twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir.
Is there a motion?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve the following resolution authorizing the sale of the district's general obligation combined purpose bond series twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Is that sufficient, do you think? Yes, okay. Discussion, clear call of all.
Dan Snow?
Yes.
Cindy Nasher?
Yes.
Chad Byes?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
Thank you, Zach. Tell us about, uh, series D.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Uh, series, so when they changed the tax code back in twenty eighteen, uh, upon the advice of special tax council, uh, because of the timing of the bonds that we issue, uh, uh, our bonds, we use the proceeds, we also have a companion federally taxable series, which that means that the interest to the bondholders is, is a, a tax item. So we have to split those out separately from the other series. And so we're issuing two series of bonds concurrently, so they're on the exact same timeline, but we just have to have separate action items because they are separate series of bonds. So this year, that amount is one million, nine hundred thousand of the federally taxable bonds, also from the twenty nineteen authorization. And we will accept bids for this series until eleven o'clock on February seventh, and will present the, uh, the bids that night as well. Um, our practice has been, you know, that we don't have the sales at the same time on the two series. And I've gotten positive feedback from, you know, bidders who, who kind of appreciate the limited time to kind of calibrate the bid on the other series. So we think that that, you know, ultimately is in your interest to obtain as much, um, interest in the bonds as we can and, you know, hopefully have the most competitive sale that we can. So, and so that's the reasoning for the, the half an hour, um, you know, in, in the time of the sale. So that's just helps us, I think, with the efficiency of the marketplace. Uh, so other than that, it's the same action item. You know, in theory, you're just authorizing the competitive sale, which is, you know, a, a requirement by the Board under state law.
Thank you.
So I will make a motion to approve the following resolution authorizing the sale of the district's general obligation building bonds federally taxable series twenty twenty-two.
I'll second the motion.
Clear call of all.
Dan Snow?
Yes.
Cindy Nasher?
Yes.
Chad Byes?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Zach, for showing up.
Thank you all very much.
I'm glad to be in more than one place at once.
My, my, my ego and my, uh, you know, my vanity, I have to be everywhere. And I, I know that's ridiculous, but I really, really appreciate you and, and your team, and you accommodating me. You guys are always so great to work with, with your, you know, your tech and everybody is just fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, um, is there a new business? None of business. Administrative staff report. Yeah, I do have a, a brief report that I, I want to share this evening. But, um, before we get started, I do need to point out someone in the audience. I kind of said her name out loud earlier, but Hallie Rice here, our principal at Norman High School. They had a very challenging day today. And I hope you want to say thank you for your work and your administrative team's work navigating that and providing opportunity for students and families. So thank you very much for, for the work you're doing. Um, so, there you go. Um, so with that being said, kind of in the same vein, um, once again, we find ourselves in, in a, a really tough situation. Um, and, and it has to do with COVID. I, I think everybody knows that. Um, and I just want to address a few things and, and kind of goes into what I, I just mentioned with Hallie. I, I first and foremost want to thank our administrators, our teachers, our families, uh, whether it's parents and students, um, for doing everything you possibly can to allow us to stay in school while staying as safe as possible. And let's just be real about this. Um, COVID, um, as it's, it's changed and where it is today, um, is, is causing havoc, um, not only in Norman Public Schools, but in every entity across the nation and in the world. And it is a, a real serious deal. And with that said, I want to thank, once again, all the administrators and teachers and families for the work they have done because it is work, it is hard, it is scary. Um, we all feel that. And, um, I, I, words don't do it justice. My confession and thanks for, for the work you're doing, um, out there. With that being said, I, I do also want to talk about, you know, we've had questions, um, as we have in the past, you know, are you going to shut down school? What's the deal? You know, tell me about masks, all these different pieces. And I, I want to address some of those. You know, first and foremost, we have tons of mitigation efforts put in place across the district, whether it's air purifiers, um, masks, we have, um, was it K, the ninety-five version of the mask available at all our schools. Our nurses can order those just like they do everything else. So upon request, if anybody wants those masks, those are available. Um, and, you know, we got this cleaning processes in place, and we have everything there that we possibly can. And that has not stopped from the very beginning. And thank you to all the support staff that is continuing, uh, through Sodexo and other places, or even our teachers, once again, making sure that we have, uh, clean spaces. Also, uh, I just want to be very clear that our goal is, has been, and will continue to be to have school, to have a place where students can come to learn, have an opportunity for, for hot meals and the opportunity for an education. We're going to do everything we possibly can to make sure we see that through. Now, the truth of the matter is, there is no doubt, just like at Norman High School today, and I was happy to hear the numbers that you're anticipating for tomorrow, people being out much lower. But there are going to be situations to where we may have to close a grade level for a period of time or a school for a period of time. And that's not anything we want to do, but I want to, um, also assure people that we will not hesitate to do that.
Why close, you need to go virtual?
Go virtual, thank you very much. Yeah, to go virtual, not to, to close the school. But how do we do that? How do we make that decision? And, you know, I get numbers every day, all day. Um, our nursing team across the district is constantly testing and putting in numbers. But those numbers that we receive daily, there's a lag there. So we really depend, and when I say we, our cabinet, our leadership team really depends on those boots on the ground. It's our administrators, our, and Hallie, we were on the phone two or three times today talking through things and getting their recommendations on where their site is. Because truly, we want to handle this on a site-by-site basis. And we have to depend on, we get to depend on our great principals and, and other people, administrators at those buildings to give us that information so that we can make the best decision for each individual site. If we need to move virtual, or like Norman High, we got this tomorrow. We, we're, the numbers should be significantly down. Um, the other piece we have to look at is when you go virtual, you know, like today, I'm, I'm going to continue to use examples today. Where at Norman High School, there are opportunities where they have to bring multiple classes together. The great thing about virtual is you can be virtual at school and you can be virtual at home. The assignments on the computer are very similar, they're the same. And at, in the school setting, if we can manage that, it's a structured environment that's supervised. And when you close a school and go virtual, sometimes not every student has that structure and that ability to connect all the time and to keep up with things. So is there a better scenario? I don't know when it comes to education. But we want to keep kids in school. We want to try to provide every opportunity we can for there to be a safe environment and those families are, their, their lives at home are not interrupted and we're able to welcome our students to school. Once again, though, I want to reiterate the fact that this is an incredibly tense and serious time. And it's not going to change for in, any short amount of time. And there will be a situation, I have no doubt, just like you're seeing around the state and the nation, where we may have to and probably will have to close a grade level, a school site, and go virtual. And I want everyone to know, if and when we do that, we'd love to give as much notice as possible. But the fact of the matter is, um, Hallie, I'm sorry you're here now because I'm going to keep throwing you out as example. Hallie may call us tonight and say, oh, my goodness, I had some, whatever it is, come up. And we have to make a decision tonight for tomorrow. And do know we will do that. So this is an apology to parents and teachers, but it's also letting you know that we're trying to get the best information we can. And as soon as we get that information, working with the sites, we're going to make a, a decision for that individual school, classroom, or, or whatever the scenario is. So once again, we're in this again, it's never going to go away, I don't feel like, and it's going to be tough on everybody. It, it, it is, and that's just. It is, and that's just the truth. And for that, I'm sorry, but do know that our leadership team in this district, from cabinet to the site-level leadership, is working hard together to make these decisions moving forward. And we're going to do our very best to do what's right for everybody. And that is really tough right now, really tough. But we are trying to do the very best end goal, trying to have school. But if we have to make that call, we will. So, with that being said, a lot of different activities going on around the district. Um, but one example of what we are doing to try to help is, just as of today, we've canceled in-person professional development that pulls kids, our teachers, from the classrooms, so we don't have to get substitutes. That's that many fewer covers we have to have. So, that's something that we're going to move forward with in, for the foreseeable future. So, do know, we're also trying to put other efforts in place to lessen that burden on every single site. So, unless it's a have-to and there's no way around it during the school day, we're not going to be pulling people out of the sites. The other piece I want to reiterate, and I'll use Ms. Neville's words, it's all hands on deck across the board. Um, so, I just want you to know, we're deploying and investing and trying to do everything we possibly can. So, a lot of great things going on around the district. We want to have school, but we're going to do what we need to do to be safe.
With all hands on deck, did someone from administration up here go over to Norman High School today to help cover the rest?
Our coordinators have been out and about. I don't know specifically at Norman High. I know they've been across the district doing different things. I have to ask Ms. McKinney or Neville if that... I know they have been all over the place. Yes?
They've been all over at all schools. I know there's been people out of every school site. I'm not so sure about Norman High today, but I know they have been out and about, trying to support everywhere.
So, absolutely. Our administrative district inside is out and about trying to support in every possible way we can.
Today at Norman High, were you executing a plan that had been thought out? I mean, I'm...
Yeah.
It's basic, but the reason why I ask that is because all of us received emails today from multiple teachers. And so, however we can improve the communication with the teachers from Hallie, from you, just to say, this is part of what we're doing. We understand the stress points and this is the plan. And at this point, it'll change. At this point, it'll stay the same. Maybe that's being done. Maybe they didn't read the communication or they're too busy to see it. I don't know. I don't think it answered tonight. But whenever we're getting that, I felt that stress and that, you know, that anxiety in those teachers reaching out to us. So, however we can help them understand either that, you know, how crazy it gets, that it's part of the plan or it's not, let's just let them know so they can prepare and help give us feedback as well, please.
Absolutely, and I'll add on, and it was a Monday, coming off a weekend. But, yeah, the plan is definitely everything I just said. But most importantly, it's not the raw numbers. Uh, we get numbers constantly. You know, I jokingly said I binge-watch our numbers constantly. But that doesn't tell the whole story, especially when you're in a scenario as we are right now. You know, the numbers in the morning are completely different than the numbers in the afternoon. And so, the message to the teachers, to the parents, everybody watching, principals know this, is we are working with the principals. We are working with the site leadership and getting real-time boots on the ground information because numbers do tell a story. They don't tell the whole story. Every single site has a completely different story on their abilities, so absolutely.
Well, and I want to reiterate too that our site principals are doing a great job. Hallie, you're doing a wonderful job. No one wants to work in the conditions that you're working in, but our teachers need to start with you. Our teachers need to start at that level across the district. Go to the principals. They're being in touch with this office regularly. They know what the plan is. You have the tools and the answers. If you don't, you know where to find them. Also, I think, Nick, it would be great if you could touch on, since we're charging back into these rough waters, um, our teachers, our site administrators are doing a great job, but this is incredibly difficult on our kids. Um, this is no environment for children to be in, no matter what level they're in. And just that grace and that understanding and the patience that we require of our teachers needs to be brought back to the forefront of our comments. And also, this board and Nick hasn't made any changes to any policies regarding masks or shots or mandates. But the misinformation out there drives me crazy and the emails drive me crazy about, you know, what we're doing now or what the requirement will be. Well, there is nothing that's different. So, um, our website's very clear and it's not on there. It hasn't happened, but I'd like for you to touch on that a little bit, that there are no changes to what we're doing. Uh, we're going to follow the law and we're still going to be doing what we've done.
Thank you. You said most of it right there, but, yeah, absolutely. You know, any updates that are major of any kind, obviously, I will send out a communication from our side. Plus, everything is on the website. The only change that's happened is the CDC guidelines of the five days. And that's just a real broad statement, but, you know, that is very clearly stated on the website on, you know, under quarantining, I believe, and then our mask requirements. We're going to follow the law. We expect masks. If you can wear them, wear them. We require masks for our visitors in our buildings, school site buildings. So, none of that has changed from the beginning of the school year and at this point, we're continuing forward with that. The whole intent is to have a safe environment, have kids in school because the fact of the matter is, we talked a lot about, um, a lot of our kids haven't, you know, some of our third graders haven't even experienced school, you know? And now they're learning school, but now COVID's thrown that in. So, they think this is normal school and it's not. Um, so, we need to, once again, have that grace and work through things. One other piece I want to throw out there is when we're talking through things, you know, knock on wood, we've been lucky with our transportation department at this point in time. But do know, Derek, as you've seen on the news and other places, if we have any situations there, we will communicate directly to those routes and those parents and those families, schools that are impacted. And, you know, once again, you know, asking for grace. You know, there will not be tardies. They will make sure they have time for breakfast, all those different pieces because those are out of their control. Many different scenarios, many different variables at play in all of this. But end of the day, we are focusing on our students and what's going on at our sites to try to serve everybody the best we possibly can.
Thank you. Board of Education report?
I'll take my time just to reach out to the community for those that are watching and however we can communicate. I know principals have tried to communicate. Um, if you've always wanted to know what's going on inside our buildings, now's the time. Now's the time to volunteer, to be a substitute or a guest teacher in our elementaries, in our middle schools, in our high schools. And I think that will give people a new appreciation for what our teachers do every single day. I also think that this is a very educated and giving community and we need something. Our community is there for us. And now, for the next couple of weeks, we know there's going to be a lot of pressure points and people that are sick that don't want to spread COVID, that, you know, have one of the newer variants or one of the older variants. And we need someone to fill the space in their class. So, now's the time to get the word out however we can through all your social media outlets, but it's a perfect time for us to ask the community to come help us for a couple of weeks and help us get through it. But it made a huge difference today at Norman High School had we had more guest teachers. So, please, if you're out there, come on, come join us.
I'm going to change it up a little. Our coffers are full at our state and this region, Oklahoma, is probably one of the lowest as far as what we get per student. And so, I think it's our expectations as a board, as administrators, to reach out to our legislators and let's start talking about getting more money for our students. Uh, this is the time. Our revenue is way up and this is a great place to be in and I think we need to be cohesive and focus on the kids and, like I said, let our voice be heard that it's time to reallocate more funds to our students.
I have gotten a number of discussions today about, and I think in a sense it's about semantics about masking, right? Our expectation is that people be masked. Um, people, some people want a mandate. But as you and I have discussed, do you throw kids out or teachers out or not conforming? And I think the answer has got to be, no, we want everybody in school. It should be in school. Um, and I was pleased with your plea for people to be more consistent about that. And the schools that I visit, it is pretty consistent. But, you know, it is an individual decision and yet it's very clear that a gray mask will keep you from getting this.
Uh, just one quick comment on that, Dr. Snow. Uh, just to remind people, it's against the law to mandate masks in our schools unless you have three opt-out provisions, health reasons, religious reasons or personal reason, which means anything. And the school districts that have tried to implement them have rolled them back. Edmund just rolled theirs back, right in the middle of what's going on with everything right now because they realize it's an administrative nightmare and you can't handle it. Oklahoma City still has theirs, but hasn't enforced it for months because they know they can't. And so, our mask expectation is the most we can do that's practical. Mandating it and having our teachers and our administrators have to figure out who's got the opt-out, who doesn't, is just another layer that will not help anyone. So, we haven't seen those mask mandates, other than the first two or three weeks they had them, increased masks being worn in our schools in the districts that tried it. So, it's not legal and what is legal has those opt-outs.
Right. All right. Uh, Cindy?
Yes, sir. I'm going to make a motion that we go into executive session pursuant to executive session authority 25 of Oklahoma Statute 307B1 and seven to discuss the evaluation of this important.
Second.
Court call a roll.
Dan Snow?
Yes.
Cindy Nasher?
Yes.
Chad Weiss?
Yes.
Dirk O'Hara?
Yes.
We are in the executive session. Thank you.